Okay, good evening and welcome to the Monday, December 12th, meeting of the Tuckahoe Village Board of Trustees. Will everyone please rise and join me in the pledge of the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the village clerk please call the roll?
Present.
Trustee Luise?
Present.
Trustee Leo?
Present.
Trustee Alfasi?
Present.
Mayor Eklund?
I am here tonight. We do have a special presentation, but that's gonna be from the Community Fund. They're running a little bit late. They're actually down in Bronxville, making a pitch down there first, so when they do arrive, we'll break for them. That's gonna bring us to the adoption of the minutes, the approval of the minutes of the November 7th, 2016, meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano?
In favor.
Trustee Luise?
In favor.
Trustee Leo?
In favor.
Trustee Alfasi?
In favor.
Mayor Eklund?
In favor. Approval of the minutes of the November 21st, 2016, special meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano?
Favor.
Trustee Luise?
In favor.
Trustee Leo?
In favor.
Trustee Alfasi?
In favor.
Mayor Eklund?
In favor. Do we have any written correspondences?
No, we do not.
We do not? That'll give us our first opportunity to address the board on anything that's on our agenda tonight. You just give us your name and address and the floor is yours.
Jean Gizmerovic. I live at 35 Silvan Ave in Tuckahoe. And I wanted to, first of all, say thank you to the board. Here to discuss the school's own 15 mile an hour sign over on Underhill. And so, behalf of myself and the ninety-some odd parents over at Andress, I want to say thank you for considering it. We think it would be a great help and benefit to our community, raising awareness of drivers around the neighborhood, especially for the students that are gonna be crossing the street and going to the school during busy commuting times. So, thank you very much.
Okay, pleasure. Thank you. That's on our agenda tonight. All right, that's gonna bring us to our resolutions. Resolution number one is authorizing the consolidation of vital statistics with the town of Eastchester. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And I'm gonna ask Mr. Burke just to kinda... passing the mic tonight.
Sure. What this does is, what the vital statistics are, is the issuance of birth and death certificates. Approximately, I would say fifteen to twenty death certificates are provided for the village each year. The clerk's office deals with that. What this does is, is it sends that function to the town. Currently, New York State has mandated a new software program be implemented. It's, you know, an expensive piece of program, so the town of Eastchester has to purchase it as a town. This provides them... This just sends this function to the town of Eastchester. So, we don't have to have a specific program just to do fifteen to twenty death certificates a year.
And they do an awful lot, I know that, so...
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Okay, roll call.
Trustee Giordano?
In favor.
Trustee Luise?
In favor.
Trustee Leo?
In favor.
Trustee Alfasi?
In favor.
Mayor Eklund?
In favor. Resolution number two is authorizing free, short-term, street parking in the business districts of the village to encourage local shopping during the holidays from December 21st through December 25th. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano?
In favor.
Trustee Luise?
In favor.
Trustee Leo?
In favor.
Trustee Alfasi?
In favor.
Mayor Eklund?
In favor. And resolution number three is to establish a 15 mile per hour school zone speed limit on Underhill Street between Columbus Avenue and Cameron Place. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano?
In favor.
Trustee Luise?
In favor.
Trustee Leo?
In favor.
Trustee Alfasi?
In favor.
Mayor Eklund?
In favor. Resolution number four is authorizing an amendment to the collective bargaining agreement with the Tuckahoe Police Organization. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano?
In favor.
Trustee Luise?
In favor.
Trustee Leo?
In favor.
Trustee Alfasi?
In favor.
Mayor Eklund?
In favor. Resolution number five is authorizing the payment of vouchers in the amount of $1,472,669.72. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano?
In favor.
Trustee Luise?
In favor.
Trustee Leo?
In favor.
Trustee Alfasi?
In favor.
Mayor Eklund?
In favor. And we have two late additions. Resolution number six is authorizing the submission of a municipal waste reduction and recycling state assistance program grant for a furniture sharehouse metal container. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano?
In favor.
Trustee Luise?
In favor.
Trustee Leo?
In favor.
Trustee Alfasi?
In favor.
Mayor Eklund?
In favor. And last is resolution number seven, authorizing the submission of a municipal waste reduction and recycling state assistance program grant for recycling coordination education. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano?
In favor.
Trustee Luise?
In favor.
Trustee Leo?
In favor.
Trustee Alfasi?
In favor.
Mayor Eklund?
In favor. Any discussion items tonight, Mr. Burke? Nothing? Okay, we're gonna move on to departmental reports, and we're gonna start with the Chief of Police, Chief John Costanza.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the board. Just a couple of announcements. First is just to go over our winter parking regulations. The snow zones, most of the signs are up, and that is anytime the snow begins to fall and ending twelve hours after snow ceases to fall. And it doesn't matter how much is accumulated. Unfortunately, last night was a test, and people that got summonses aren't too happy about it, but it was enough to get the DPW out with the sanders, and therefore, there were summonses issued for the snow zone. So, I just urge our residents that whenever snow is in the forecast, they need to move their cars off of those snow zone streets to allow our snow removal, facilitate snow removal. And again, it doesn't matter how much is accumulated, if it's enough that the large apparatus has to get out there and, you know, start sanding, salting, and plowing, those cars are in the way. So, please follow that snow zone rule. Starting December 15th to March 1st, the no parking 3:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m. in our business districts goes into effect. So, we will start by issuing warnings to cars on the night of the 15th, and that runs through March 1st. And lastly, there are still a couple of streets in the village that are posted December 15th to March 1st, so that's no parking anytime during those winter months. And then finally, alternate side of the street parking is not in effect. It's suspended throughout the winter months. So, all those signs are flipped, and there is no alternate side of the street parking regulations until the weather breaks sometime in March.
Okay.
I just want to announce that the Tuckahoe Police Organization will have their annual Children's Christmas Party this Friday, December 16th, for children nine and under. It starts at 4:30. There'll be a magic show, and then later on, an opportunity to meet with Santa. So, generally, it starts at 4:30 and ends around 6:00 p.m. So, every member of the community is invited with children nine years of age and younger. And I just wanted to take this opportunity to express the condolences of the whole entire police department to the family of John Salambeany, Dr. John Salambeany. Dr. Salambeany was the police surgeon for five decades, starting in the mid-sixties to date, and he was just a very kind and caring man. Took care of sick and injured members of the police department for approximately fifty years, and our families. We owe him a tremendous debt of gratitude, and we just want to say thank you, and certainly our condolences to the family. It was a tragic loss for the entire community.
It was, very sad. Thank you.
And respectfully, I'd like to ask that we end the meeting with a moment of silence for him.
Was planning on it, thank you.
Okay, and then finally, just Merry Christmas to all of our residents, Happy Hanukkah, a happy and safe New Year to all.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Frank DiMarco, Superintendent of Public Works.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the board. I just want to touch on some items. Leaf season for us is over, so we're no longer vacuuming leaves. We go from October 15th to typically December 1st. It was late in the season, so we extended it for another two more, two weeks, which we're done with today. We actually rode around the village, and we've collected and vacuumed every pile that there was around, so we're basically done with vacuuming of the leaves. So, I asked residents, if they're going to leave leaves out, please bag them from this point forward. Also, you know, I mentioned that I was gonna put the mulching-in-place videos in our, on our, on our local channel, and they're showing clips every day, sometimes twice, three times a day, so if anybody wants to view it, it is available. And this is a perfect opportunity to try it and at least test it in your own homes, where now, at this point, you have minimal amount of leaves, and you can see how it really works into your lawn by mulching it in place instead of bagging it. Next, DPW's toy drive is at the community center. There's a drop-off box there, and there's also a drop-off box at DPW Yard at 15 Marbledale. We're gonna be collecting toys for tots, and it's going to be until the 23rd of December, which is Friday. Those toys will be given to ECAP, and ECAP will be distributing the toys for us, to local residents. Other than that, I just want to wish everybody a happy and safe holiday.
Thank you, Frank. You, too. They'll be doing a lot of wrapping on Christmas Eve, I guess.
Yeah. Recycle, please.
Yes, of course.
Recycle the wrapping paper.
Thank you. I'll see Johnny Klosey. Camille, did you have anything for us tonight?
I just want to remind the residents that village taxes are due December 31st.
Merry Christmas to you, too. Gary, anything?
Nothing on my end this week.
Okay. David?
Yeah, I would want to take this opportunity to kind of give the public and the board an update on a few of the projects, the larger projects that are going on throughout the village. One is the project at 150-160 Main Street. The building is done. It looks really great. COs have actually been issued for the 150 building. That's the building with the commercial space underneath. Everyone else always asks, what's the commercial space gonna be? Speaking with representatives, they do have a lot of interest in the commercial space, however, they have nothing to share with us because they're looking for the right tenant. We are still working with them and the building department on issuing TCOs or COs on the other portions of the building currently. 100 Main Street is getting underway, and it's been for the last five or six weeks. You'll see the concrete barriers out on Main Street, protective barriers, so pedestrians have a pathway to go. That is gearing up. They have a foundation wall being poured, and they're gonna be working as long as weather dictates, so that is, you'll see that coming out of the ground, especially in the springtime. That's gonna be really gearing up. And the last is, what I would suspect a lot of people are here for, is the hotel project. The developer has held its second community meeting. They held the first one on November 16th, the second one on November 30th. There will be another one this Wednesday night at 7:30 at the community center. It is the developers' meeting. They'll provide a PowerPoint and kind of an up-to-date of where we are. The last two meetings were kind of giving an update of what kind of testing was taking place and their schedule for testing. Just today, Mike Musso of HGR has provided some raw data. What the developer is currently doing is, or the developer's environmental team is currently doing is tabulating all that data, and we're trying to figure out how to get it up on the website with a cover memo and a cover sheet to explain the data, so it's not just a lot of this raw data that no one understands. So, we got that today, and we'll be working on it the next few days. The developer should have a lot of information on Wednesday night, so we look to see what they can provide us, and we'll be putting more stuff on the website as we go.
Okay, the project developer, he rents the, these are his meetings. He rents the community center, and I know he's been doing it every other week. Is he gonna do it? We had a conversation on the 20th.
We don't know if he's gonna do it the, I think it was the 28th. We believe that's not a great day for the residents to even get there, and then is it January 4th, maybe the first one, right after the New Year? We're not sure if that's the best date either, so we'll be talking about that to see if maybe January 11th would be the best date for the residents to be able to get there, because we do know those are a couple of busy weeks right there.
Okay.
So, we will formulate that in the next few days and, you know, put that on our website in Boltonborn.
Good. Thank you. Miscellaneous business. There will be a Hanukkah menorah lighting ceremony on Friday, December 23rd, 6 o'clock, over here at the mini-mall. We're gonna be joined by Rabbi Deish from the Shabbat Jewish Center. This is pretty pleasant. We did this the last couple of years, very nice, yep. Village offices and DPW are gonna be closed on December 26th in observance of the Christmas holiday. Our next village board meeting is gonna be on January 9th, and the offices in DPW is also closed on January 2nd in observance of the New Year's holiday. And that's gonna bring us to our Board of Trustees member reports. We're gonna start with your Deputy Mayor, Tom Giordano.
Thank you, Mayor Eklund. Just a couple of things. I wanted to acknowledge how beautiful our village looks, decorated for the holidays, and I'd like to thank Frank and the DPW for all of their efforts to make it look so great and festive, and to Chief Costanzo and his staff for keeping us safe during this, healthy during this busy time, and also to the Merchants Association for underwriting the cost of having such beautiful decorations. And to that, further to that, you know, I know it's a time of much giving, but it's also a time of much buying. Please consider the merchants, your local merchants, when you decide to make your purchases. That's an investment in keeping our community. That, some of those dollars from sales taxes come back into our community, and it also keeps them in business and keeps our community thriving. And then, lastly, but not least, I'd just like to wish all of our staff and all of our residents a very Merry Christmas, a very Happy Hanukkah, and a very safe, healthy holiday season, however you choose to celebrate it.
Thank you very much. Trustee Luise?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to start off with the Tuckahoe Senior Citizens Report. Excuse me. The Tuckahoe Seniors will be celebrating this holiday season on December 20th with a pasta lunch, which is going to be catered by J&amp;G Deli, as well as a member potluck dessert buffet and Christmas carol sing-along. The Eastchester-Tuckahoe Chamber of Commerce is generously supporting a visit from Santa along with gift bags and raffles. I'd like to add, in closing, on behalf of the Tuckahoe Seniors, the mayor and I, and well, a few other village officials, town officials, attended the holiday party that was held at the Davenport. It was really an exciting afternoon to know that the membership of the Tuckahoe Seniors has grown to 160 members, and the support that the seniors receive from the community and various groups here in the community is truly outstanding, and just want to compliment Jennifer Vetromile for her outstanding work as the director there. And I'd be negligent if I also didn't thank the Community Fund for their generous support to the seniors throughout the year, ECAP, as well as Keller Williams Realty. Lastly, I just want to mention about the History Committee that meets here every Wednesday in Village Hall. The committee continues to encourage residents and former residents to add to their archives with their wedding photos, pictures of old Tuckahoe, and old Tuckahoe records. Nick Sanzano and Phil White continue to give additional PowerPoint presentations on the marble industry and Tuckahoe before urban renewal. Lastly, the committee wishes to thank all the residents, former residents, and the Tuckahoe Village Board for their continued support, and they wish all residents a happy and a healthy New Year, and I will echo those comments myself. And I also would like to wish everyone a very, very healthy New Year. So, everyone enjoy the holidays with your family and friends. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Trustee Leo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Friends of the Tuckahoe Library are now participating in the Amazon Smile program. Amazon Smile will donate half a percent of any eligible purchase to Friends of the Tuckahoe Library. For details, see Amazon Smile. The programs at the library this month are as follows. There is sing-along with Ms. Eling, and that will take place on December 19th at 11:30 a.m., and it's open to children of ages up to six years old. There is also a program called Music Time with Ms. Jill, and that will take place on December 27th at 11 a.m., and it's open to children of ages two to seven years old. There's a kids' movie, Beauty and the Beast: Enchanted Christmas, and that will take place on Wednesday, December 28th at 11 a.m., and it's open to children of ages four to 10 years old. Baby Time, Storytime, and that will take place on Thursdays in December, the 15th, 22nd, and 29th at 11 a.m. Then, the Storytime, that will take place on Fridays in December, and that would be the 16th, 23rd, and the 30th at 11 a.m. Registration is required for these programs, so please call the public library. And then there, for adults, there's the one-on-one computer classes, and that will take place on December 20th at 11 a.m. Another program is how to download eBooks on Overdrive workshop. That will take place on December 13th at 11 a.m. And there's a knit and crochet group Wednesday nights at 7:00 p.m. Then, there's also the Giving Tree. Buying books for the public library in someone's honor or memory is a unique gift that contributes to the community and provides a lasting legacy for future generations to enjoy. Please take a moment to select a book from our Giving Tree and give a gift that keeps on giving this holiday season. And then, I also'd like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a healthy, happy New Year.
Thank you. Trustee Alfasi?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think trustee Tom Giordano said it best. He took the words right out of my mouth, you know, and I just want to wish everyone and echo everyone's sentiment here this evening for Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Holidays, be safe. There are people waiting to speak, so I'll keep it short.
Thank you, yes. And I'm just, I'm gonna say the same as well, but I also want to echo the chief's comments. It was just so tragic, the loss of Dr. Salambeany, so his family is in our prayers. He was a great guy, and he served this village for 50 years, so that's quite a legacy. So, I do also want to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas, a Happy Hanukkah, and a wonderful New Year, and with that, I'm gonna go to one of, some of my favorite people. I see Melinda Burgess here and Mr. Denning from the Community Fund. If you'd like to come on up to the microphone and tell us what's happening at the Community Fund.
Good evening, everybody. Mayor, how are you?
Very well. How are you?
Well, thank you. Happy Holidays. Thanks for taking the time and having us come present. My, just for everybody's education, my name is Neil Denning. I'm the president of the Community Fund of Bronxville, Eastchester, and Tuckahoe this year. I'm here this evening to announce the launch of our annual campaign. Our campaign goes to benefit over 20 programs throughout our community. Throughout the generosity of our donors and hard work of our volunteer board members, including Mr. Giordano, and an evaluator group of close to 40 people, we're able to meet the needs of many organizations that impact our fellow residents' quality of life. We seek to have an impact on our community by focusing on key initiatives within programs benefiting our youth, families, seniors, health, education, and prevention. We're very fortunate to live in an area that embraces the concept of neighbors helping neighbors and can bring resources to bear where there is a material need. The Community Fund is approaching its 100th anniversary and has proven to be a valuable investment in our community. Last week, we presented a check to the Eastchester Volunteer Ambulance Corps, which covers the Bronxville, Eastchester, and Tuckahoe community for a new state-of-the-art ambulance, which you'll see throughout the community in the short term. One of our previous ambulances was actually utilized by the Tuckahoe Police Organization, so we try to keep the assets within the town as we kind of help them rotate through. We support programs throughout Bronxville, Eastchester, and Tuckahoe alongside the Southeast Consortium, which works with children, teens, and adults with disabilities and special needs. We support the Senior Citizens Council, which offers programs to seniors in Bronxville and Tuckahoe to keep our seniors engaged. We support the DARA programs at the Eastchester and Tuckahoe schools, as well as the Maxwell Institute and the Bronxville Schools, educating our youth and teens about substance abuse, peer pressure, and helping our younger residents make better decisions so they can help our community flourish. We're among the largest supporters of the ECAP program and help fund initiatives for the Tuckahoe Police Organization. As you can see, there's a lot of, a lot we do as a community, and there's a lot we can accomplish together. I'm here this evening to encourage the residents of Tuckahoe to support our annual campaign and to seek to get involved with the Community Fund. We're very fortunate to have Tom on the board, as I mentioned earlier. So, we're asking people to please support the Community Fund this year so our agencies can continue to provide life-changing services in Bronxville, Eastchester, and Tuckahoe. We're all really neighbors helping neighbors. So, please, if you're looking for additional information, our website is www.thecommunityfund.org. On there, you can find details for Melinda, for the board, et cetera. So, you know, we encourage everyone to spread the word, and we're doing good work throughout the community that is meeting a lot of needs. So, thank you for the time.
Thank you so much for coming, and, you know, we say it every year, every dollar that goes to the Community Fund is ultimately coming back to somebody here in this community.
Absolutely, it's an investment in our own community.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
So, thank you. Thank you very much for everything you're doing.
Happy Holidays, everybody.
And you, too.
Same to you, Neil.
All right, that's gonna bring us to our second opportunity to address the board. So, anybody like to speak to us?
How you doing? I'm Dennis Winter. I just want to tell folks, tomorrow, December 13th, Tuesday, if you see this a week from now, it'll be too late, but tomorrow, December 13th, is an East Justify Board election, so everybody in Tuckahoe votes at the Tuckahoe Community Center, so I would encourage all the residents to come out tomorrow between 2:00 and 9:00 at the Tuckahoe Community Center if you're in Tuckahoe, that's where you vote. And if you're watching this next week, well, it's too late, so take care and have a Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I am Rachel Zolotov, and I want to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas and Happy Hanukkah and a wonderful holiday season. I'm here, actually, because a few different issues have come about, and as far as the dump and the toxics coming off of the dump, I think you now have an extraordinary and rare opportunity to encourage all of the data and research and analysis that is being done so that you can actually do the best safety protocols for this village. We have, as you know, Dr. Hughes, who's this extraordinary toxics expert, who has worked intensively with toxic waste, hazardous waste dumps, who has been for over a year studying all the data that's been made available to him. And I do want to thank you. I would like to know about the current data, because as you probably read in the email blast that had come out, despite with what Mr. Musso had said, Dr. Hughes has not received any of the current data. And we understand that some of the data may be preliminary, but we're hoping that the village will release, with the caveat that it's preliminary data, and it hasn't been, it hasn't gone through the DEC's authorization process, so you can get a handle on what is actually coming out of the dump. There's a few different issues when it comes to contaminants. One is the vapors and the contaminants that are in the vapors. We all know already, the Department of Health has stated that the site itself is a significant risk because of the Freon levels, which are extraordinarily high. Currently, in what they call the camp monitoring, which is the Community Action Monitoring Plan, And it does not even detect Freon, which is what the DOH had flagged as this site being so tremendously toxic from. Um, in addition, there was some preliminary data that was shared with Dr. Hughes a few weeks ago, that in the southern part of one of the testing pits, they found an extraordinary amount of Freon in the soil. And what makes that very distinctive is that Freon apparently evaporates very quickly. So usually, they're used to finding it in the soil vapor. Soil vapor meaning that it's underneath in the dirt, and they put whatever their vapor testing is, and then it all fills up, and then they will come and test it in their labs. Um, as far as it being in the soil, that indicates a live, active source, which means in, in sort of scientific terminology, you've got stuff leaking down there. And usually, what happens in a superfund site is as they find things that are leaking, they go look for the things that are leaking, and the site expands, the hotspot removal site portion expands, um, to, to find these leaking sources, because they don't want to have leaking sources. And since we've all sort of understood that everything in there has been buried for at least thirty years, if something's actively leaking now, we don't know how many things are actively leaking, and to really go and do the reconnaissance is one of the things that we would ask you as the mayor and all of the honorable Board of Trustees, you have the ability to request of, of Mr. Musso, who actually is your, um, I don't know if the word is employer, has been under, hired under you as the environmental consultant, to go and do reconnaissance of these barrels, which is something that has been asked of the DEC many a time, but we're finding that the brownfield program actually, unusually enough, has not been usually equipped to handle dumps of this magnitude and category. A usual brownfield is a dry cleaner or a gas station where you already have a building on it, and they know, okay, they're gonna look for, I don't know, these ten or twenty things if it's a gas station, or these ten or twenty things if it's a dry cleaner. You are dealing with a dump that everyone has, um, recognized, has, was, been in use for, oh, I guess thirty years or twenty-some-odd years, and a myriad of all different things were being dumped in it. And it behooves you not to take this opportunity where you now have an active remediation on plan to go forward and say, hey, we know that you have all of this stuff in there, we have perfect indication, you have a community-funded, uh, independent, extraordinary scientist who has done now incredible maps and is actually assessing right now of the data that he has of all of the indicated areas of contaminants that have already been found and where the open zones are, and take this, take this as a gift to the community and use it all together. We all, from the very beginning, we all want, all of us, we're sitting in this room, all of us want the safest possible way for this site to be remediated, taken care of. And that is what our whole goal is. So, I appreciate very much, we'd like to get a time on the data, so, and also, as far as asking them to use what they call these FIDs, Flame Ionization Detectors, to get the actual contaminants, we'd also like to ask you to please do something called SUMA canisters on the dump now. Let's know what's coming off of it now. That's, that would be sort of like, of course. Um, then, uh, there is some preliminary data that apparently has come out about the east side of the Marbledale Road, and apparently, there was some Freon found, uh, found on the east side. I'm, this is what was told verbally to Dr. Hughes by Mr. Musso, but we don't have actual numbers yet, and that's why the data is so important. And what it, what appears to be happening is this, you have contaminated vapors, and vapors in a way act like water. Vapors go up where water goes down, but vapors seek out any pathway. So they'll run along all of your sewer channels, all of your underground water channels, all of your electrical channels, to go to all sides of the road. And what appears to have happened when, in all of our research, is that the Department of Health, um, didn't even recognize vapors and their impacts of interior homes or buildings such as this until approximately the two thousands. And that's right now why you have the DEC and Department of Health going, okay, the vapor impact is only the inside. Well, in further research, we found that the level of contaminants that had been found on this site, if it was an active facility, not, uh, an, an active dump, it would actually trigger the Clean Air Act because of the amounts of contaminants. But it has slipped through the cracks. The brownfield program is not robust enough to take on this sort of a dump. Um, there are lots of different ways that the brownfield program has been there to really encourage development, which everybody wants. Everybody wants to have any kind of site that would be blighted to be turned into something wonderful. Everybody is pro that. Um, but the brownfield does not seem to be equipped to handle the kind of, I'm, I'm sorry?
You're, you're making the statement based on what?
On, intensive research.
By whom? You're, you're a scientist in this field?
Uh, yes. I would have to say, after over a year of, of going through this, I would say yes. I have done intensive research. I am on the phone, um, maybe four times a week with, uh, Dr. Hughes, if not more, and other environmental activists and environmental consultants.
Let me, let me ask you about Dr. Hughes. Dr. Hughes has been, uh, bi-weekly, uh, been on a meeting.
It's not bi-weekly. No, no, I'm sorry.
Let me, let me finish, please. David, tell, discuss, um, tell us what Dr. Hughes has been participating in, and for how long?
For how long exactly? I'm not, I'm not sure. At least six, at least six weeks to two months.
I can, I can.
It's not bi-weekly.
Please, please let him finish.
It's once, um, on Tuesdays where Mike Musso, uh, Dr. Hughes, the DEC is always invited to join, and, um, Paul Simenello from the Eastchester School District is, and, uh, can join. They look at any data they have, um, they kind of go over the protocols of what's going on, and Mike gives them a sense of how the project's moving along.
And this has been going on for at least six weeks?
At least six weeks.
Has Dr. Hughes, to, to Ms. Zolotov's points that she's made tonight, has Dr. Hughes put anything written, uh, that, that complaints, concerns, anything in those six weeks that you're aware of?
Not that I would be aware of, no.
So we, the village, have not received anything like that?
I've, I've never seen it.
Well, if you'd like him.
Oh, oh, let, please, let me finish. Because you're making statements, you're quoting Dr. Hughes, and Dr. Hughes has not put anything in writing, has not told this board or anyone that I'm aware of, that he has the problems that you're discussing.
Well, he can. I mean, what happens is after he has, after he has, it's once a week on a Tuesday, Mr. Chimanello has rarely participated, the DEC has rarely participated. The last two, uh, meetings, um, actually, the very last one, which was this past Tuesday, is one of the reasons why I'm here, is because, uh, Mr. Musso actually said he had no problem whatsoever, and you can ask him, of releasing all of the data to Dr. Hughes, with the exception of.
Nor, nor do we have any problem with doing that.
Well, this is wonderful. So we're all working together. This is great.
Absolutely.
So, the, the whole point is if you would like, and, and Dr. Hughes, he didn't want to be complaining, he wants to be reaching out to everybody. If you'd like him to put a letter together saying, I'd like this, this, and this, or we need this, this, and this, he has, he has.
Ms. Zolotov, what, what I'm trying to say is, this board is unaware of anything
That's why I'm here.
that Dr. Hughes has been saying.
That's why I'm here.
Okay.
I'm here, and if you would like it in his own words, in his own writing, perfectly happy to do that, right? And that's why I'm saying we have this extraordinary opportunity for you now, and if you would like Dr. Hughes to give his whole evaluation, right now, his understanding and our understanding was, his evaluations would be going to Dr. Musso, I'm sorry, Mr. Musso, and to the DEC. If you would like his evaluations directly, he'd be more than pleased to send his recommendations directly to you.
The, the correct form, first of all, is that the meetings that the developer is holding, which are bimonthly meetings at, uh, they're renting the community center, and they're, um, have you been to any of those meetings?
Well, you see, actually, the first we had heard of, or I had heard, rather, of the meeting was the one, the very first one, and it was told to Dr. Hughes, it may be forty-eight hours before, by Mr. Musso. And then, and then I actually sent an email to Mr. Musso, because that was the same day that you were doing your trolley ride around, what was that, about a month or so around, it was a meeting, you were doing the trolley ride. It was a complete conflict. So I wrote to Mr. Musso and I said, could you?
No, they were, they ran, they didn't run at the same time.
Yeah, originally, it did. I can show you the emails. It was originally going at seven or seven-thirty.
Meeting was at six o'clock.
Because of my email, sir. So.
Trolley ride was at seven.
Yes, because.
So, there was no conflict.
No, originally, there was. I sent an email to Mr. Musso.
There was no conflict on.
After I sent the email to Mr. Musso, pointing it out, and also saying that it was very short notice for anybody to get there within just two days. And also, um, if it is in fact, and that was another point that would be brought up for the community, if this is in fact a community awareness meeting, you have these wonderful announcements on the front of the, the, um, website, or at least at the top of the special topics hotel, because it usually shows up on the calendar about forty-eight hours, maybe right, we did follow, it showed up once before, right before Thanksgiving, but nobody's checking it then, and you gotta go look for it in the calendar. It's also mislabeled as a DEC meeting, and it's not a DEC meeting, as far as we understand, but it would be really helpful to the community, you know, we're all busy, you're busy, we're all busy, the community's busy. It'd be wonderful if they could be live broadcast, because there's many who would like to see that.
The point I was bringing up is, um, that's the forum for the discussion on these specific points.
Yes, but you see, but you see, they don't, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
All right. Um, the, now I'm gonna ask you a question. I don't, because I don't know, I haven't been to these meetings. Um, does Mr. Hughes attend those meetings?
Well, Mr. Hughes, no, he does not. He lives in Syracuse, right? So for him to come all the way down, and it's a, it's a bit much. Um, that's why he was hoping that they would be, like, well, actually, we actually had somebody record one of them to get them on, so he could review them. But at the same time, it's very, it's lovely that the developer and HES has these meetings, but, but.
The planning board made that a requirement.
Which is wonderful. We're, we're all wonder, information is what we're all here seeking, right? We all want to work together. But the issue is that actually, for these recommendations, um, HES does not have the ability to make those changes on their own. You actually have the ability to take Mr. Hughes's recommendations and direct Mr. Musso to review them, and if you so believe them to be, which they are, in the benefit of safety and welfare. Everything that Dr. Hughes has put forward.
So, yeah, I think you've made it very simple, then, and I, I agree with what Trustee Alfassi said. Please ask Mr. Hughes to, whatever it is you're, you're claiming that he's alleging, please have him put it in writing, so we can give that specific information to the, everyone here is paying for, through their taxes, they're paying for Mike Musso, the village's consultant. It's actually reimbursed through a fund that we get, which the planning board also, uh, made an excellent choice in making sure that we don't have to bear that burden. So, in the planning board resolution, it clearly stated that the developer is required to hold these meetings, that there, uh, developers are required to put money in escrow, that the village can go ahead and use to hire our experts. So Mike Musso is our, is the village's, the resident's expert. I understand Dr. Hughes has done wonderful things for, uh, your organization, and that's great.
Also for you and for the whole community.
Get it, get it. You, you, you made that clear. Um, but let's just not, you know, throw this, let's be on point. Let's get Dr. Hughes to be specific about what he feels is right or wrong, and let's get that to Mike Musso, and Mike Musso will then respond to that. Mike Musso and/or the developer and the DEC. It's not necessarily just Mike Musso is, uh, the, the final authority on this, so I think we should be.
If I may, I just, I just want to point out again, because this, this bears repeating, that Dr. Hughes has been in conference with Mike Musso on a bi-weekly, uh, basis for at least six weeks.
That's true.
So, so it's not to say that Mike Musso and Dr. Hughes are not discussing this issue. They are.
Well, this is, this is the situation, is Mr. Musso has not been able, because he's waiting for your authorization, to release any of the data, and therefore, that is, that's, that is.
That's a hundred percent.
Well, that's, why would Ms., why would Dr. Hughes, Dr. Hughes has not received any data from either the DEC. Okay, all right, so we'll, we'll, we'll address that.
Yeah, I just want to jump in. Uh, and I know it's something that, uh, Mike Musso has taken exception to. He never said that the village wouldn't or would release data. It was said at a community meeting, is that the data belongs to HES. They're the ones that are doing it, they're split sampling it with the DEC. At a certain point, the village will be privy to that information, which was yesterday that Mike Musso got the, the first round of data. So it's not available yet to be provided to, um, Dr. Hughes, it's not ready to be put on the website as of yet, but as we've always said, is we're gonna share as much data as soon as possible, once it's all tabulated and, and all put together.
David, I would, I would dare say, because I'm kind of taking the lead here on this issue tonight, but I would dare say, release the data, even in a, even in, let me finish, even in, even if in its raw form, to Dr. Hughes. He'll be able to decipher it. You know, anything else that we want to clean up and put up there for the public to perhaps be able to intelligently decipher, we can still do.
So just, on that point, real quick, is that Mike just got, uh, he, he just got, today, he just got anything today, so, um, he's in California right now, we've been playing phone tag for quite a bit, but Dr. Hughes will get the data, and the data will be admitted to the public as soon as possible.
I want to thank you all for that. That's quite lovely.
He just chimed in on this, I just texted Mr. Musso, and Mr. Musso said, as soon as he gets the data, he'll share it.
Okay. That, that is, that's wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
In, in addition to that, there is the scope of work that HES is going to be proposing for the next phase, and Dr. Hughes would like to have that, be able to look, look it over and make recommendations before it is finalized, have it come out in the draft form, and that was, be another part of the data share. Is that also acceptable?
Well, when you say scope, to my understanding, is there's various scopes, plural.
Well, as far as, um, and I can have Dr. Hughes submit you whatever he needs, but what I understand is they have now all the hotspot removals about to start. They needed to have this last round of data coming through to assess what they're going to do for the different parts of the hot, hotspot removal. And that is this next phase. So whatever is encompassing this next phase of the scope of work and what they're going to be, um, actually taking out of the ground, and what they're going to be moving, and where they're going to be working, he would like to, um, see that document in a draft form before it has been finalized.
Dr. Hughes and Mike Musso, they communicate all the time.
That's why I'm here.
I, I get that. Well, I don't know why he's not here, or.
Because he lives in Syracuse.
Okay, then why hasn't he picked up the phone, or at least sent us?
Well, because this is, because we didn't know that was an option.
No, I'm gonna, let me, let me finish my train of thought here. Um, Dr. Hughes and Mike Musso are in constant communication. They're not battling, they're not opposing each other. They're, they're both scientists, they're both looking at the same information, they're both sharing thoughts and ideas on what's in this project. So, I just don't understand why those two individuals, you're, you're almost making it sound like they're not communicating, but I know that they are communicating.
Well, there's communication, and then there's open sharing, um, of collaboration. And with your encouragement and with your approval that they are allowed to collaborate, that would be very much, but no, there, there are directives that are, that are in place, that you, as the mayor and the trustees, have put in place of what Mr. Musso is allowed to share, or what he perceives that he's allowed to share. We've all just clarified about the data.
That's simply not true.
And also about the collaborating. Well, so, you know what? So that's absolutely wonderful, that you are all on board with them collaborating on all of this in an open sharing of data.
Listen, there is no information that this village of Toccoe has that Dr. Hughes is not open to, to review. None.
That is wonderful.
None.
And the same with the scope.
And never, and never has there been, to my knowledge.
Well, that, well, that's, well, this is wonderful, because it has, there has been sort of an impediment or barrier in, in the way, and now it's gone. So this is fantastic, and this is exactly what we all want to have working together. So I also have.
But I, let me, let me say one thing, you're not gonna get the information at a village board meeting.
No, that's, I know that.
You're gonna get it at the meetings that occur at the Toccoe Community Center.
Well, the data, we're hoping, is going to be either emailed or posted, so it can be downloaded, you know?
You'll see that on the village's website. Um, they're actually, I personally believe that the developer should have his own website, this is his project, he should have all of that information constantly in his own website. We are, we are going the extra mile to make sure that we put everything possible, there's hundreds of, of documents on the village's website, for the benefit of all our residents in the community. Uh, I personally think that that's something that, uh, is a responsibility of the developer, but you know what? I'm absolutely fine with having our village administrator make sure that that is kept as current as we can.
And so you know, Dr. Hughes daily checks the, the village's website to see if any new data has been put on it, and he's daily checking of what goes through. So, um, as you're all saying, there's no barriers, and he's able to have it, and they'll do the draft of the scope of work. This is fantastic. We're all working together to make our community safer and to see that the release of the contaminants will be treated in the most safe manner. Um, I'll have also Dr. Hughes write to, not only what his comments are to Mr. Musso, but also to all of you, so that you can take a look. That'd be wonderful.
Have it to David Burke, that's our point person.
So you'd like him all to send it to David Burke, and all the comments and all the rest, and see, and if there's any issues as far as timelines of data, you'd like him to, to contact, uh, David has wanted to give him the timeline of when he can be receiving what data and how, and I could even share Dr. Hughes's email directly with you, so, that would be wonderful. Well, thank you very much, and a wonderful holiday season to everybody. So you'd like him all to send it to David Burke, and all the comments, and all the rest, and see, and if there's any issues as far as timelines of data, you'd like him to, to contact. David has wanted to give him the timeline of when he can be receiving what data and how. And I could even share Dr. Hughes' email directly with you. So that would be wonderful. Well, thank you very much, and a wonderful holiday season to everybody.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to?
Hi, I'm Diane Ryan. I live on Marbledale Road. I have just two things to say. One is I have been following this, this Marbledale thing now for a while. Unfortunately, I can't make all the meetings. But I do have to say one thing that I've been just dying to say. You know, we all, I was here when the newscast was here, and it was very crowded. And everybody agreed that selling this property was like a benefit to Tuckahoe, and that this was such a positive thing going forward. And you know what it is? Unfortunately, we're hitting so many problems with this, the air, the vapor, or whatever else you were saying. And it's true. And all these things cause cancer. The only thing I don't understand is that if there's 1% that this, this property by digging it up can cause cancer, why would we do it? And I'm going to tell you that I think everybody needs to go through one cycle of chemotherapy to understand what I'm saying. Watching somebody go through cancer is totally different than a person going through cancer. And I know that. I've lived on Marbledale. I don't know where my cancer came from. No idea. It's not hereditary. It's not in my family. It's nowhere. I have been struggling for three years. Who knows? Maybe I got it from living off the, off the thing. But the fact is, that everybody needs to go through chemo. Because if you did, you'd have a sympathetic heart to think that, God, if one child or one person, he has to get cancer, and to go through chemotherapy, I think all of yous would change your minds about saying, you know what? Let's not touch this land, or to leave it alone for the mere fact that it could cause that. Things go wrong. We all know that. There's all these protective things going on. You're going to have the land covered. I heard all that. I can't make all the meetings, but I heard all of it. And you know what? It takes one mistake, one thing to happen. And it's human nature that it happens. I'm on board with you thinking that Tuckahoe, we, to make it better, to make it, you know, to build something. But in this situation, I think you're all wrong. I think everybody here is wrong. If there's one slight chance that anybody in this beautiful village, and I've only lived here for, what, 20 years, has one slight chance of having, and going through chemotherapy, it should be stopped. Should the land should have never been sold. It's a should've, could've, would've thing right now, but I think you really need to pay attention. I think you need to go visit the cancer centers and see what these people go through. Because for one thing, if you have to sit there for a week after chemotherapy, and nothing but get sick, you'd understand what the village is trying to say. And I think it's shame on us for letting this happen. Shame on us. Because now in the next 10 years, how many people are going to develop a cancer? They don't know where it came from. And they have to sit there and fight for three years on chemotherapy. So I do hope you understand that. And you just keep that in the back of your mind, all these people, because I know out there in Tuckahoe, I'm not the only one that's sitting here suffering through this cancer. I know that. So I hope you have a sympathetic heart and understand. And I really don't like your attitude, Mr. Alfanti, because you know what? You don't know what it's like. You don't sit there in a chair every two weeks and get chemotherapy ordered, to get sick for three more days, to know that I'm going to be sick on Christmas. So you know what? You need to have a sympathetic heart, and you need to understand this. These kids had cancer. That is horrible. No child should have that little remote to get cancer. Not one child. Not one. And I hope you can understand that. That's number one. Number two, with the beautification of Tuckahoe, listen, I love where I live. I don't ever plan on leaving. I hope I don't have to leave. But unfortunately, taxes and everything else, like everybody else, eventually I'll have to leave. But beautification, I didn't get a chance to say it over the summer. And the reason why is because I was sick. So now I'm just going to say now, because I need to, to finally say it. But our Tuckahoe, we, our DPW, by the way, does a great job. Whoever Frank is, and they do. But the unfortunate part is, I called the DPW to ask him to cut the hedges, just by the bushes, by my thing. And the response I got back was that they were extremely busy, because there were so many other projects. We keep putting more and more projects into Tuckahoe without fixing what we already have. And I'm going to bring up the Tuckahoe, the Fisher and Marbledale. That thing got destroyed in a matter of a few days, and rebuilt in a few days. But that was because it had to do with you personally. I don't believe Tuckahoe should be used. Any of our employees should be making overtime for no reason. There was no reason for them to be making overtime, but for your personal reasons. And you know that, Steve, and that was wrong. And I just have to, and the fact that you used DPW, the taxpayers' equipment and people just to get your project done was wrong.
Can I, I'll, I'll respond to that.
Absolutely.
Okay. The project was slated for, by the Department of Public Works, to go ahead and do an enhancement project before the Boy Scout Eagle project was, was introduced. So that project was, all the entrance ways of the village are going to be redone. So that was slated ahead of time.
And I know that.
The Eagle project, the Eagle component of putting the pathway and all that, that was actually, that assisted the village in a reduction. As you know, your, your sons actually helped in the project. So that actually saved the village money, because the project was done by free hands of all the scouts in the project. So that's...
The only part that was done on that project was the path. And that project...
The pathway and the bench, he fundraised, he...
I understand that. He did a great job. And it's nothing against your son, because he's, he's a great kid. He truly is a great kid. The whole point is, I watched the DPW get that whole thing done, so that, that weekend that was set, and it was slated, and you're right. But the point is, it ended up causing overtime for the DPW, because they were out there on the evening, they were out there, and the weekend, they were there helping the project. I'm sure he volunteered his time. I don't even question that. But it was still used of the Tuckahoe equipment, and the Tuckahoe, all of the stuff that the taxpayer. And I just think that if it's a project done also for that, Tuckahoe should not have had to pay to use our equipment that day, nor it shouldn't have been done so quickly, because you know what you put, you, you, you ripped something apart before other stuff, like the, the hedges needed to be cut, the park was looking disgusting. And it, and it's because the DPW was right. Whoever answered the phone, because I don't remember his name, but said that, you know, we are so busy, we don't, we, we have to go according to the schedule. But yeah, we adding more. My point, and this is just my point. My point is saying, if we cannot maintain what we already have, we shouldn't be putting new stuff in, in, in place. We need to hold off on that, because you know what? That raises our taxes too.
Well, what specifically, you're talking about hedges. So, and Frank is here, so I want to ask Frank what, what hedges...
I called Frank about my hedges. The hedges on the, on the park were coming over.
Are you talking about alongside your property?
Yeah, alongside my property. They were coming over, and I called up. I actually called twice. And the person answered, well, it wasn't Frank that answered. Frank did get on the phone the second time. But the first person that says, listen, we have got so much going on here, we have a schedule. I said, okay, so when does the hedges fit into your schedule? Well, we don't have a schedule like that. Well, you just told me you had a schedule. And the man found me to be arguing, because I'm trying to find out, well, if you have a schedule, on that list in the schedule, does it say when you're going to cut the hedges? And he said, no. So of course, he, at the second phone call I called back, he says, well, we'll get to it, whatever. And I called back, and I ended up talking to the same guy again, who, with his schedule business, but didn't know when he would cut the hedges. And I ended up talking to Frank. Frank got the job done. It's not a question if he got it done. But the point is, that was also in lieu of things getting done. I guess there was a park is going to be designated down the end of the road where the, is right by the train station, that space there. Somebody said there was, he said there was something going on there at that...
When was this? When, when?
It was the same month.
Oh, it was in the springtime. Okay, got it. Okay.
I just, I can't make the meetings, and this is the one meeting I can make, before, God knows.
No, I understand.
So, but you know what? And that was the response that I got. And then all of a sudden, I look out my window, and there is the DPW doing the overtime for the park, you know, to, to do that whole pathway stuff. That, to me, was just a little bit of poor planning there. You know, I, I did quite...
The DPW is always very responsive.
But my other point, my other point is, if that project was for your son, and I truly got the project for the, for the thing, for the Boy Scouts, I understand that. Yeah, my boys helped. But you know what? Our equipment shouldn't have been there. Our Tuckahoe equipment shouldn't have been on that, should not have been there. Because that just makes it look like Tuckahoe just did his project, and we paid for it. And that, to me, that's what I feel like it did. It made us look like we're paying for it. Because you know what? I'm not, my kids are not going to use the Tuckahoe DPW equipment, nor are they going to use anything, I hope. It's, it's, it's an Eagle Scout project. An Eagle Scout project is done by that child. It shouldn't be, I mean, obviously, I think that, I don't know who the person was, that, I'm sure he volunteered his time that Sunday. I wouldn't even consider that. But it took a lot of overtime to get there. And I just think that that was just a waste of money. That's all.
Yeah, they did, they, they volunteered their time. And the rakes and shovels that they had...
That day, they did.
Yeah, the rakes and shovels that they were using, the, the Boy Scouts used the rakes and shovels and the mortar pan and things. Yeah, they, they did use, but they borrowed tools from, they're allowed to borrow tools for, and look, there's been other projects. This Triangle, the Triangle, what I'm saying, let me, let me just finish. The Boy Scouts, as you know, they, Eagle projects, they try to, actually, they have a responsibility. In order to use the community center as free space, part of the lease agreement for that agreement, for using that space, is that they're supposed to do community projects that benefit the village. So we've had Eagle projects where they've repainted the interior of the community center. The Triangle Park was a, a project. DPW also assisted on that. So it's, there is cooperation from Tuckahoe DPW on Tuckahoe land. And it's a, a good reason for that, is because it's village property. So it's not like...
There was a lot of overtime. And it, it was a very coincidental thing that happened on that same weekend that was planned for yours, that all that overtime was there. There was a lot of overtime prior to that. And you, and you know that. Anyway, I'm going to leave it alone. It's over, it's done with. I just voiced my opinion. That's all I wanted to do.
Okay, thank you. Frank, I know, Frank.
I just want to respond. With that particular project, I don't like hearing overtime when my employees gratuitously donated their time.
I know that.
In helping out. And we do this a lot. You know, we, we do this with the, the library, with, with the, the reading center of the library, the reading wall. We did this with the Eagle project. These are, these are two Eagle projects that we, we've helped out. And we've gratuitously helped. In overtime, there was no overtime that was charged to the village. And the particular case, you know, just, just to recognize how DPW works, you know, we're a handful of employees. So we try to systematically schedule the year, whether it be leaf season, you know, we have all hands on deck. That's six employees doing leaf pickup. So it's kind of hard to do hedge trimming, or cutting grass, or really anything else out of the ordinary. But it seems to work throughout the year. We just ask that people be patient, that we do get there, to, to complete the work that requesting of us. You know, there's a season to do masonry repairs. There's a season to do flowering, watering. You know, we, we grind stumps, that we remove trees throughout the winter months, because it's the best time of year to do that. But please, you know, I just, I just want to acknowledge that. I don't want it to get said that there's, there's always overtime when something needs to be done at DPW. My men, most of the time, and a lot of times, do a lot of gratuitous work that people need to acknowledge. And this is on their own time. And, you know, I want to acknowledge that, you know. And for this particular project, it was Artie, it was Silvio, and some other individuals that had donated their time. And they do that quite a bit. And I just want that to be known.
Yeah, we appreciate that, too. It's, you know, and it's part of the reason why, when we do hire, we try to hire locally, you know, because these are people who live in the community, you know, they want to give back to their community. So as much as they can within, you know, within their employment limits, we get it. So, thank you, Frank. Thank you. Yes, sir?
Hello, gentlemen. This is Albert Stern, 14 Westview. I feel really bad with this lady told us about her, her chronic disease. And I'm really concerned this chronic disease are going to keep going in this town. This has been a very sloppy job that the DEC and the Department of Health has done here. They've enlarged it, made it bigger and bigger, and more, they looked at more and more things, and they're willing to drill more and more. It's still a sloppy job. What they originally gave us was a very small partial, which they wouldn't allocate to a normal brownfield project. This is not a norm, normal brownfield project. It's much larger, much more dangerous. So last month, I asked you, the trustees, to immediately issue a temporary moratorium, delaying the beginning of construction of the Marbledale Road Hotel project. The moratorium is necessary, I believe, to protect the public safety and health of the residents of the village, since testing is still going on and construction looks about to begin. You all know the long history of respiratory diseases and deaths among the constituents who live near the dump. She's just one of them. There are many more. Common sense calls for you to respond to the constituents by stopping this project with a temporary moratorium. I mentioned that last month. There was no response from you. We have not heard from one trustee or the mayor on the moratorium question. Your silence is demeaning to the community, and we deserve better than this. On another topic, so if you really don't care about your constituents, which is pretty obvious right now, what about your employees? Recall that one, at one of the planning board meetings in the community center, a Verizon worker said that he and his fellow employees will vacate their workplace on Marbledale when construction starts. The Verizon Employee Union has chosen not to put their workers at risk. They are afraid of this project, very afraid. And they are working upwind from the project, upwind. The union is very smart to avoid exposing their employees to unnecessary risk, which is starting, I guess, this week, the big risk. What about the residents and employees downwind from the project, including your own village DPW employees? Have you considered that they are located directly downwind from this project? Have you asked them what they think and feel about being directly downwind from the carcinogenic dust and fumes escaping while testing has been going on? And when construction begins, what's it going to be like for them? Do you think they are willing to sacrifice their health for Mr. Weinberg's hotel? Are you concerned, are you really concerned about them? Have you encouraged your DPW families to increase their health and their life insurance policies because of this project? I suggest that this is the least you could do. Will the DPW employees be issued gas masks and hazmat suits like the hotel construction workers, or they be like the 9/11 workers, unprotected until it was too late for many of them? It's incredibly tragic to think that our DPW employees may get sick from this project. It's just as tragic that with the DEC and BCP limited liability provision, that they will not be able to sue the developer, or the village, or you trustees, or the New York State for ruining their lives. Where do you, five of you stand on this? Are you willing to do the right thing and grant a moratorium to protect your constituents and your employees? Are you going to go down, just go down on silence?
You're done with your comments?
I'm done.
Okay, thank you.
You have any comments?
I'm going to actually...
We advise this board...
Yeah, I know.
Last few months, that, you know, this is a litigated matter, I guess you all know, and the public knows, that an Article 78 was filed.
Could you explain a little bit to the, because the public at home is totally unaware of this. So I'd like you to go into as much detail as you can.
There's individuals that have basically sued the planning board, the DEC, the DOH, the developer, challenging their decisions in this project. This matter is now being litigated up in Westchester County Court. So therefore, my advice to this board would not be comment. It would be appropriate to comment on this project right now.
And I know we...
This matter's going to be, it's going to be decided.
It'll be decided in court, right? Okay. And that advice is applicable to, we, I understand the village board of trustees, the mayor and board of trustees, planning board members, because they're...
I would advise the planning board members also not to comment on this while this is being litigated.
Okay.
It's a litigated matter. It's, it's going to be decided by a judge. It's, decisions have been made, and we're going to let it decide, judge decide.
Okay, all right. Anybody else wish to address the board?
Good evening. Melba Caliano, 14 Westview. I had not planned to address the board. I want to commend the woman on Marbledale who came before you and raised the concerns about cancer. Some of you know what my situation has been. I know what some of your situations have been. It is real. It is here, and it is not going to end. You need to think about that. You need to think about that all the time. There is no hotel worth anybody in this entire village, residents and employees included, worth their health, their loss of, frankly, just passing away. There is absolutely nothing worth that when it is within your control to make sure that every single thing is done to limit that risk. You know DEC has not done what they can do. They are hamstrung by budget. They are hamstrung by rules and regulations. You know DOH has not done everything they can do. They too are hamstrung by budget cuts and regulations. The law does not provide a response for every problem that society has. But it's an intelligent society that can fill those gaps, where the law has gaps. You know the law has gaps. Some of you have personal experience with very bad diseases. You know I have personal experience with a very bad disease. You can stop it. A moratorium is independent of an Article 78 proceeding until I see legal precedent that tells me you cannot do it while an Article 78 proceeding is running. Until I hear legal precedent, I would urge you to file a moratorium, to issue a moratorium. You must protect your residents. You cannot afford to risk anybody else's health. We don't owe you that. We don't owe Weinberg that. You owe us that. Thank you.
Ms. Caliano, Ms. Caliano, if, if I may, I mean, you, you've, you've spoken now, I, I do have a specific question. And I think you've spoken very eloquently. You would like us to, to institute a moratorium based on incomplete data, or the DEC's not applying that data properly? Or I, I'm trying to understand what the moratorium should be because? How, how should we do that? And I'm not being aggressive, I'm not being agre...
Mr. Alfasi, you have a village attorney. Let your village attorney do the legal work to find out, Mr. Alfasi. You're an attorney, Mr. Alfasi.
I am. And I'm asking another...
You can figure it out. You can do the research, Mr. Alfasi, as can Mr. Giardano. You're special counsel to the Yonkers City Council, are you not, Mr. Alfasi?
I certainly am.
Do you give them legal recommendations?
I do.
Are you the liaison to the planning board at the Yonkers, in, in the city of Yonkers, Mr. Alfasi?
No, I'm not. But go ahead.
Okay. So you can do the legal research. I'm not doing legal research for free for you, Mr. Alfasi. Your village attorney is paid by my taxes, and your demeanor...
When you're done, may I have a moment?
And your demeanor has irritated, not least of all, everybody in this room, but many of the people that have signed the petition. You seem to be the point man for kicking us in the butt, Mr. Alfasi. us in the butt, Mr. Alfassi, we don't appreciate it, where our votes put you there, Mr. Alfassi, you might want to keep that in mind, I don't have to answer your question about moratorium, Mr. Alfassi, you have an obligation to consider that opportunity, I did the research, Mr. Alfassi, you're not getting the free benefits of my legal research, because I'm not getting paid to do it and advising you how to do it, you can have your village attorney to do it, you can decide not to do it at all, there's a price for everything, thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry you would charge this village for your legal research, I'm really sorry to hear that, but I'm glad you said on the record that it's your legal opinion that a moratorium would be appropriate at this time, my question simply was, and perhaps you'd like to give an answer to this, on what basis do we bring that, it's not just for me, if you've done the legal research, educate the voters, educate the people that you've just, you've just evoked, you've done the legal research, you say it can be done, educate us all, but you choose not to.
I'm going to ask anybody else like to address the board, and, okay then, it is holiday time of year, and I just want to wish again everyone a very Merry Christmas and a Happy Hanukkah, and we're going to actually take a moment of silence, I would ask everyone, just take a moment of silence for respect for Dr. Salamini. Thank you, may he rest in peace, and with that, I ask for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second. Have a very good evening, Tuckahoe.